No deny that I had such an individual.
Call to order this special meeting for the city of East Grand Forks for Monday, December 21st, 2020 is now five o'clock and see clerk please call roll.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassil.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Better.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Reapel.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn McCormick. Number one discussion to consider dispersing funds to businesses affected by the Minnesota Executive Order 20 dash 103. I appreciate everybody coming in on special meeting tonight. The mayor and I and we're talking about this a little bit more about what has come down and what the executive order has done or what has not done for the businesses. And we thought it'd be appropriate to bring everybody back in to discuss what our options would be to able to fund some businesses that are affected by this executive order. I know that we're dovetailing off of what Mr. Demers talked about last week. And after talking and meeting last week, the mayor and I met with Mr. Murphy, Ms. Anderson, and Mr. Gordy, and we thought appropriate that we probably should do something because there's some businesses that are not eligible to receive anything. And we wanted to make sure that our businesses stay around, they're viable, and that we can make it to a point where hopefully we're seeing some money come in from the federal government. Sounds like they approved their stuff. Was it last night or this morning? So that's why we wanted to come back in and have a discussion on it. So I think we'll hand over to the mayor, then we'll come back and then we'll have some discussion on what we were thinking, dollar amounts, and go from there.
Yeah, thanks again, everybody for coming in for this. We made the decision we made on Tuesday night as far as allocating some local dollars for business relief. And then reality kind of changed on Wednesday when it was extended for a few weeks more. And then on Thursday morning, I get up pretty early and I called President Olsted and said, hey, Mark, how you doing? And he said some stuff like, I've been up since 4:30, couldn't get back to sleep. And that's the heart that he has for these businesses and doing the right thing. And also, of course, doing the right thing for the people of our city because these are their dollars. So asking ourselves, you know, what would be the priority of our residents as far as preserving the downtown, making sure these businesses can come through this lull and back to the good days on the other side. And so I said, you know, I have the same thought. It shows up different ways in all different people. But I was, you know, okay with the decision we made Tuesday. And then the reality of Wednesday came and we looked ahead to the next three weeks and said, it's probably important that we do something. And in my mind, I had a range of, you know, we could prioritize $200,000 or $300,000 to this effort. And President Olsted said, my top number is like 250. And then again, that's not going to meet the need, but it is to say, this is money in our general fund reserve, and we just want to be responsible and try to hit that balance of benefiting all of the community with their money. So we did meet for an hour, our finance director, our EDA director, President Olsted and I. And I don't know, I already forgot, I had several meetings that day. Mr. Murphy, were you there that day?
I was, yes.
Perfect. So we had that group. That's already a blur. And we talked at some length and in some detail about what that might look like. We're limited to up to $25,000 that we could allocate for that purpose to each of these businesses. And then we look at the need that they have and try to not, of course, go beyond that, but up to as much of it as we can reach. And what we came up with then is that, as a proposal for you as the council to consider, in that range of 250,000 to 260,000, when we applied the mathematics, we identified that there were, there was at least one business that we didn't reach out to or properly connect with when we distributed the COVID dollars. That one could receive the 15, you know, hypothetically, just as a proposal, there were two businesses that would not qualify for the Minnesota dollars because they weren't in full existence a year earlier. And that would be Joe's and the Spud Jr. Perhaps they could get the 15 to try to make up for that. Then we have two larger employers that, you know, with tremendous numbers of employees and higher overhead, two of those that could get up to the 25. And again, hypothetically, those two could be the Blue Moose and the Up North Pizza. And then the rest of them could get the 10. That brings us to the total of 260. And the only reason we put that amount of detail to it is so that you, the city council, can make an informed choice. Should we do something like this or not? Because ultimately, the shaping and designing and implementing of this goes to the EDA. And then the other reason to have put some detail to it, which whatever we decide, if the total changes, if any individual amounts would change, that way we give some guidance to the EDA of what we're looking for. And of course, they can take it or leave it. Ultimately, it's their call. History says they would take our guidance and revise it. And of course, as Carl Anderson and I just chatted earlier, the reality could even change in the next one to two weeks. We may see, oh, we missed that one. And they could shift the totals around inside of whatever allocation we make to make sure that with the best information we have right at the end, we catch everybody that we possibly can. And so we offered that level of detail only as a starting point, how you could get to a total of that 260. And again, that's all for this group to decide. And it could be allocated according to that or some other way, to our recommendation, to the final decision of how the EDA board wants to handle it. So I do believe from the ones I've talked to that A, it's a pretty desperate need, and B, these dollar amounts are sufficient to help them through the three weeks, you know, through the January first of month bills and heading into the February first of month. We can move pretty quickly within all good legal timing. And I don't know what the state will do as far as timing of dispersing their funds. But I do know what we can do and to the point that it's in our control. I think it's a good thing for us to take an action kind of like this, whatever we decide. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Does anybody have any initial questions or thoughts on this?
What kind of money did we use out of our CARES Act money?
Carly, do you have that number?
About.
She's got it. If you give me a minute, I can look it up. I'm sorry. I think it was 296 for the city and 118 for water and light.
We had that same conversation, Chad.
So basically, what if, if we went with the 260,000, basically, it would be taking, we'd take that money, spend it, or give that back to the businesses, which basically wipes out the 250,000 that we put into this year's budget? Is that what we're saying? Basically, that's what we would do? Or am I thinking the wrong way? Right? Because we, we put out the 250,000 to buy down, but now we're taking that money and putting it back. So eventually, at some point in time, we're just taking the money off the back end, coming from reserves, spending it that way, correct? In a roundabout way.
Mr. Johnson.
Well, if we move on this, how soon will these businesses get a check?
Mr. Gordy, do you have a timeline on that, sir?
The EDA has a meeting scheduled on January 4th. At that point, I'm planning to give them a copy of the parameters and a copy of the names of the businesses with the dollars that were discussed, if that is acceptable to the city council. The each of these halves to be a forgivable loan in the form of a forgivable loan. It's one of the reasons it has to go through the EDA. And there is paperwork, and it will depend on how quickly the EDA can do this and how quickly each business can close on the loan paperwork after it's prepared by the city attorney. So I cannot give you a definite date, but things are already in motion toward that end. If I may.
Mr. Gallsted.
I just want to make sure everybody understands, again, though, the mayor said it fairly succinctly. First of all, the loans can't be more than $24,999. Otherwise, it's considered a business subsidy, and we have to go into a whole different process. Next, the money typically that is going to the EDA is going to be a grant, so that this, this body, the council essentially sends it over to the EDA, and then the EDA, it can have no strings attached. So realistically or technically speaking, the city council can't say you need to use this money X, Y, or Z and give different people X, Y, and Z. It all comes through, it all goes to the EDA, and the EDA would set up the parameters of the fund and the dispersment of the proceeds. And I just wanted to make that very clear so that we were under that, everybody was under the same understanding. I'm not sure when the county money or the federal money's going to be out. I would find it very difficult to believe, depending upon the circumstances, that the checks will be going out. It would be towards the end of January, if that's the, if that was the specific question.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
And that would be at the earliest.
Anything else, sir?
Did you say that was at the earliest, Ron?
I believe that's the earliest, yeah. Because we're going to end up having to draft up the loan documents, we're going to have to receive the information, we're going to have to get the businesses to come in and close. There's got to be a forgivable, and I'm working on that right now, don't get me wrong. But we have to have a, essentially a closing date, a dispersment. And the EDA is not even meeting until January 5th. So that would be, or 4th or 5th, whatever the date was. But so then, so then you're looking at trying to get all of that accomplished and all the closings and such done, and get together with the businesses and sign the documents. And I would say it's going to take at least two weeks minimum. So you're looking at the end of January at the earliest.
Thank you.
Helms.
Mr. President, if I may.
Mr. Gordy.
There are three possible programs that are ongoing right now. The EDA has a, has at its last meeting approved a loan program at 0%. No payments until September 1st of 21, and no interest until September 1st of 22. We have the program we're discussing tonight. There is also, under the state assistance legislation, money set aside for the counties. And I have already talked with Mr. Whiting, who is the county executive, and with, he has talked with my counterparts in Boston and Crookston as well. He is taking a proposal to his county board before the end of the year, and then that will be approved after the end of the year. Because the county does not have an economic development arm, the three of us helped Mr. Whiting in putting the program together, similar to what we did for the CARES Act. And we, from what he has indicated so far, we anticipate receiving some funds similar to what we did for the CARES Act that will have very few strings attached on the way we use them to assist businesses. In addition to that, as Mr. Olsted pointed out, there was a program also approved last night by the federal government to assist that a portion of it includes assistance to businesses. We've not seen any information on that yet.
Paul, what's the anticipated amount of funds that the county is going to distribute to the city of East Grand Forks for that program?
The county receives a total of just over 600,000. I would expect us to receive somewhere between 200 and 250,000, probably in the area of 220,000 or 225,000.
Thank you.
That's just my estimate at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Helms.
Thank you. I was under the understanding that this money was going to be coming out of the CARES Act that we had for the COVID expenses? Is that true or not true now? Isn't that what you talked about before? For the, the city held back for their COVID expenses?
No, I could say it's all a matter in how you want to account for it. I know that was a conversation that was brought by individuals of our city staff who said, you know, we did receive all of those dollars from the COVID CARES Act, and we did use a portion of those for our own expenses. And kind of like what Chad pointed out, you know, we could come back in and cover those expenses through our normal operations and essentially, you know, redirect. And it's kind of an internal thing. It's just a way to look at it. So it's a matter of, you know, philosophically, how do we feel about doing this? And that makes it a little bit more sensible or palatable to allocate these funds, considering the amount that we did receive in the CARES Act. But it's not, there'd be no way to go back and redo any CARES Act paperwork or anything. It's kind of an internal way of just looking at how the funds were used.
These numbers that you gave out, Mr. Mayor, with the, that you gave out for certain businesses and whatever, are you looking at the overall businesses? Or are you just looking at the ones that have already applied for this money before?
In this case, we're especially looking at those that got the extension under the executive order 20 dash 103, which is basically the modification of 2099 that a few things resumed, but mostly they all stayed under lockdown. So under 20103, those that are still unable to open for full operation, those were the ones that we identified as being probably in the greatest hardship right now. But then, again, knowing that these other dollars are coming, but they have the most emergent need at this time.
Okay, because I was just asking, because as Mr. Gordy said, you know, there's, the EDA does have a program out there, but it's a loan. Now we're talking a grant. So I'm thinking that there might be a few more businesses that might want to be involved in a grant than...
Mr. Helms, or Helms, excuse me, it's not a grant, it's a forgivable loan, and there's going to be parameters that are tied to it. So you're going to have to tie it to specific criteria. And then if that criteria is met, it becomes a forgivable loan. If that criteria, for some reason over time, is not met, then it would be a loan that would be necessary to be repaid. So it's, it's a loan that's potentially forgivable.
Mr. Helms, if I was one of these businesses that was in really dire straits, I might accept the initial loan as prepared by the EDA, and then maybe one could use the proceeds of the second one to pay the first. But you cannot have a guarantee that it will happen. You have to qualify, you have to meet the criteria for forgiveness. But if they have a real emergent need for money, they could tap into that other loan program just to get them through, let's say, the 1st of January. And watching this approval process, watching what comes through us, what comes through the EDA. And I wonder, Mr. Gordy, if you were making that connection, that if there is any connection, it's right there, that that loan program is available now, this other loan program carries with it the possibility of forgiveness, a person arguably could do both.
The EDA's loan program has a slightly broader profile of targeted businesses to include some of the certain businesses that were also affected, but were not as directly affected, businesses that may not have been directly shut down, but because of the nature of their business, find it almost impossible to operate and secure any revenues or make any revenues because of the nature of their business. So remember, Dale, as we talked about at the EDA, we talked about a certain classes of businesses to go beyond that. So there's very slightly different focus in the EDA's loan program is slightly broader as it was created and targeted. The EDA has a series of loan programs, not just the targeted program. And we also have our expectation of the county funds that may be able to address some businesses. The targeted, the state's funds that go to the county are not targeted to any particular business under the state law that was passed by the legislature. Instead, it can go to meet the needs of other businesses as well. And so that pot of money will be available to work with other businesses. And that will be a, my expectation is that will be a grant program as opposed to a loan or forgivable loan program.
If I'm not mistaken, I think what Mr. Demers was proposing at the Tuesday night meeting was more of a grant and not a loan, if I'm not mistaken. But anyway, I guess, what I'm really saying is I think that what we're doing is, it's not even a Band-Aid, it's a piece of tape. I know you get tired of hearing me saying that, but it's the honest God's truth. And there might be some businesses out there where a piece of tape will get them by. But I'm going to say there's probably more out there where a Band-Aid won't even get them by. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I have spoken in detail with several of these businesses, and I know others around the table have, that I'd like to hear from them also. This is real money to these businesses. I know of one who has an outstanding tax bill of $7,000 that right now looks insurmountable because the revenue is so small. You get that 10,000, you can pay your tax bill, and you have 3,000 also for working capital, probably one month's rent on that space. This is real money. And this is, this is to fill a hole that's been created by this pandemic. And it fills the hole with money that may not have to be paid back if you can meet the conditions of forgiveness. This is way more than tape or a Band-Aid. This is, this is a lifeline until such time. I understand they need to get back open, they need to get back serving their customers. This is nothing compared to actual revenue from sales, where you actually pay your staff, pay all your overhead, pay your food suppliers and whatnot. This is nothing compared to that. But in this moment, this could be everything. It really could. The dollars that I've been hearing match up with this very, very well, and the need, timing wise, matches up with it very well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if any business has a tax bill with the state, they should be contacting the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue is working with these businesses on a one-on-one basis, and will work with each business on tax payment plans.
Excellent.
Mr. Reapel.
Just a question on a forgivable loan. Is that taxable income then?
If it is forgiven, yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
But they should have losses also to go against that revenue?
Hopefully.
So in effect, it comes together pretty well. I mean, I guess I could ask Mr. Vedder, but a year like this, where the losses have been piling up, they'll be okay on the earning side?
I know.
I guess you would.
I do know.
Yep.
Any other councilmen have any thoughts or questions? Mr. Murphy, Ms. Anderson, do you have anything to add?
I do not at this time. I think you guys covered what was discussed at that meeting pretty well. So I guess if, the only thing I'd say is if this is something that the council would look forward to pursuing. Granted, this is a special meeting, you know, they really, you can't take, you really shouldn't take action as far as putting anything forward on that. But you, at this point, if you wanted to give staff direction on what to bring back and what, what type of number you would like to see, that would be good.
Clarification from Mr. Gallsted. If this is a special meeting, could we not take action at this time because of that?
I believe that Mr. Murphy is correct, but that's not something that I looked at or was asked to look at, so I'd have to double check. And I can see if I can get the answer for you before you adjourn, but I'm...
Well, I guess I'll clarify what I meant. I mean, I meant if we wouldn't be talking about, at this particular point, I don't know that we'd be able to take any names of businesses, process any checks, move any, those type of things as far as taking action on approving any of these particular, any loans for any particular entities or businesses. I guess what I was saying, for that type of action. So I guess what I was saying is if this is something that the council wants to move forward and give us general direction on that, we certainly could. But I don't know, at this point, we would be able to work with any individual businesses at this point or to process.
Wouldn't this not be direction to the EDA anyway, though?
Well, it is direction to the, I took it as way Mr. Murphy was saying, I believe this, because we held a special meeting, noticed it for this specific purpose, this group could take a, if you wanted to bring a motion to allocate X amount of funds to the EDA, you could do that. It specifically would be that general.
Sure. That's what I was wondering.
Yep. I believe you can do that.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure. Mayor, go ahead, sir.
And again, to back up what Mr. Gallsted said, not that he needs me backing him up. The only reason to provide any detail to you at this time was for you to say in your minds, hmm, is this really needed or isn't it? Will it have the desired effect or wouldn't it? And to get to some dollar amount that we would approve. And of course, again, all we're approving is that total dollar. And any suggestion we make to the EDA board, they have good people on that board and they're very capable. Any ideas that we share would just be as a starting point for conversation, and they have full authority to establish the program and the parameters for application and approval and dispersment of funds and all of that. So indeed, what we would be considering is, just as we've agreed, yes or no, to some dollar amount that could go over for this purpose.
Mr. Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the 260,000 figure to the EDA.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, a second by Mr. Grassil. Any other questions or discussion? I see none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. Motion is carried. You entertain a motion adjourned?
May I just?
Oh, sorry.
Just to remind the group that the dollars that were already given out to the businesses, there will be a 1099 for 2020 for them. Any dollars now given out would be in 2021. And if it is a forgivable loan, there'll be a 1099. At the time, it is adjusted as a loan. Otherwise, the payments from the CARES Act and county money will be on a 1099 to the businesses in the calendar year that it's paid out.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, you had a question, I'm sorry.
Real quickly, we won't be meeting for a while, and I think there's a question on a lot of our minds, and that pertains to the vaccine that's coming, the two vaccines that are coming. So I'll be very brief. I had some good interaction today with the folks at Sanford, and also with Sarah Reese, and also with Jeff Bushy, our fire chief. And I would guess if I had a conversation with Chief Hedlund, from what I understand, that any of our folks who do the emergency calls and have that certification for those front-end emergency calls will be phased in toward the top of folks getting the vaccine. Some of those could start for our people as soon as 1229 and 1230, so just a few days away, a week or so. So you know the phasing to the general public, there's a phase one, then it goes on to phase two, and so on. Council members are in phase 24, and the mayor's in phase 25. No, just kidding. But there's a phase 1A, 1B, 1C. And in phase 1A, we have healthcare personnel, long-term care residents, and it sounds like they're maybe going to move folks in their age 75 plus. And that's phase 1A. And phase 1B goes to essential workers, educators, food and agriculture, police firefighters, correction of... correction officers and so on, particularly police and firefighters who do not have that medical component. Then 1C goes to adults with high-risk medical conditions and those age 65-plus. And the timeline will be worked out, but I should say also, I learned that the county will be administering these vaccines. Also, Sanford, for East Grand Forks residents, will be administering these vaccines. I'd say by the time it starts to roll out to the general public, it's still several weeks away. But we will, I think we're going to see them into phase 1ABC pretty, pretty quickly. Again, there have been some delays in vaccine delivery, which we've heard about. And so all of these details are being worked out. Sanford let me know that they've received the vaccine in Fargo and in Thief River, but no amount of vaccine has come here yet to East Grand Forks. They do believe they'll have that in the next week or two. And so you're not missing anything to the general public and even to most of us here. You're not missing that you could have stepped in and had the vaccine sooner unless you are in one of those very early 1A, 1B, 1C groups. So it's pretty cool. It's happening and I believe it'll change things up pretty well as for changing whatever that pandemic curve was going to look like. So I do believe we'll have access to that, according to that. And by all means, check out the website at Polk County Public Health. They update that and they'll keep everybody updated if you have any questions about your timing of when you might get the vaccine. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, sir.
One thing, if I may, Mr. President. I see Mr. Larson is online, I don't know if he can hear me or not, but are you ready for all this? You've got some big shoes to fill coming up here pretty quick.
I'm looking forward to it.
All right.
Entertained a motion adjourned. Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Grassil. All in favor of the aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion is carried, mew is adjourned.